Well, this meeting of the Planning Commission to order in accordance with Section 841412, Nebraska statutes. Current copy of the Open Meetings Act is available for review as posted on the wall of the council chambers. In addition, if you wish to have an agenda of today's meeting, there are some outside the door.
Correct.
Roll call, please.
Dart.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Dakin.
Fuesner.
Here.
Rickard.
Here.
Yaw.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
We have a quorum. You all have minutes of the March 18th meeting of the Planning Commission. A motion in regards to those would be in order.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of the March 18th, 2022 meeting as so written.
Second.
Move it and seconded. Any discussion? Mia?
Malone.
Hi.
Dakin. Fuesner.
Epstein.
Rickard.
Aye.
Yaw.
Aye.
McGinnis.
Aye.
Dart.
Aye. That motion passes. Just for information purposes, if you are here regarding any of the items associated with the Peterson subdivisions, that would be items five, six, and seven. They have requested to postpone this for later time, so we will not be hearing it today. The first item on our agenda is, excuse me, a discussion item from the Buffalo County Comprehensive Plan presentation by Tammy Jeffs, the Buffalo County Planning Commissioner, and to provide information to the City of Kearney Planning Commission regarding efforts to increase responses to a survey for the Buffalo County Comprehensive Plan. Good morning.
Good morning. Like you said, I'm Tammy Jeffs. I'm a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Buffalo County. In my real world, I work at Community Action Partnership of Mid-Nebraska. I know some of you from flood stuff that we have done as well, so I appreciate you making time on your day and on the agenda for this. We are working on our comprehensive plan. It's usually done every 10 years. The last one was updated in 2012. It's pretty much getting a lot of aggregated data. There is a consultant group that we are working with that was looking at our trend data and then projecting out the next 10 years on what they think the population growth is going to be in the rural and unincorporated areas. I presented to city council Tuesday night. Mike Morgan was very interested in receiving that data. We plan on getting that to Brenda once it all gets aggregated and sliced and diced, and they've been running numbers past us. Primary information that is going to be relevant with this survey is its opinion on what you want to see done with the development and growth outside of the city limits, including like all the small towns as well. So we want everybody in Buffalo County to take it, not just the ones in the rural and unincorporated area, or asking all elected officials to do so, and appointed individuals, so you're included into that process to give your insight in that. The primary areas of interest that we definitely are looking at is conservation, subdivisions, alternate energy, including wind turbines and solar panels. So those are primary areas of interest with that, as far as what we're going to put into place for guiding us in the next 10 years that come. All right. So there is the survey. There's paper copies that you can get at the courthouse. The city also has some available if you would choose. There is a link if you'd like to do it online. We have a QR code also if you're really snazzy and want to shoot the card, go to the code and do it on your phone. We've tried to have it as convenient as possible for any of those individuals. May 16th is the last day for that. Any questions?
Are you reaching out to the rest of the county? You're going to the city boards, I'm sure, the town boards, et cetera?
So I was appointed by Sherry Morrow, so I have taken on, I've already done the school board, I've already done the city council. You gentlemen, I've already done the radio station. So everybody else who's outside of the limits are taking their town. So Amherst, Elm Creek, all of those small towns, Sumner, Miller, all taken care of as far as another individual is going and presenting the same information to those folks there.
And if I want to tell somebody where to pick up that, pick up the questionnaire?
Denise Daniels, our administrator for planning and zoning in the courthouse, has those available for her, for them to pick up, and we have envelopes as well if they want to mail it back, you know, pick it up and leave with it and mail it back later.
Can members of the general public complete the survey?
Yeah. Yes, we're asking all of Buffalo County residents is the only restriction is, you know, we don't necessarily want Hall County filling it out for us or Dawson County, but if you are from Buffalo County, and we don't care if you're in town or in the unincorporated areas.
Is this an anonymous survey, or do you?
It is anonymous.
Yes.
With that, I mean, you could put your name, and there's a comment section if you want to address, you know, you can attend any of our meetings if you'd like to address us with any issues with that part.
When you enter the vestibule down for building services, if you look on the table right there near utilities, we have our, that's where our surveys are located with envelopes to send back. Really easy survey. They're gathering a lot of great information. It took me about 10 minutes to fill out. So you can take as long or as short as you need to, but yeah, so anybody can take it. We encourage everybody to take it.
Do the consultants you're working with, I mean, what's a good number to get back?
Oh, for a rate of return?
Yeah.
I believe they were shooting between the 30 and 40% rate, but I know with the surveys that we do as an agency, we don't get near that. We're closer to the 10 to 20 percent.
That would be a fantastic number.
Yeah. So we are trying to offer it as many available platforms that there are to try to do that because I oversee the Peterson meal program out there, so those folks want paper. Like, do not give me a QR code. That is not going to happen. So, you know, so we're trying to hit the audience that we want, but, you know, younger folks, no problem.
The comprehensive plan that you're working to update, do you have an estimated date of completion?
May 16th is the last date for doing the surveys. I'm not certain how long Hannah Keela needs to aggregate all of that data. I believe they're building it as we go. Two weeks ago, I checked, we only had 22 respondents at that point, but that was the first week that we'd started distributing. So I hadn't asked for an update since then.
I wasn't on the commission 10 years ago when you last updated it. Will someone from your group come here and make a presentation when the plan is finalized?
If you would like that, we can sure do that. I'm not certain what happened 10 years ago. I've only been on for about five years now, so I'm not familiar with what they did with distributing that. The data, I believe, will be available also on the Buffalo County website, and we're going to send it to Mike directly. I know Stan Claus was also interested in looking at some of that, so.
When do you anticipate the comprehensive plan process to be finished?
That, I think, was what he just asked me, so.
So the comprehensive plan will be done by end of summer, early fall?
I think so. I can ask Denise for sure. I am not certain when the end date is. I think it's, like, we've sent him back a couple times. They projected eight housing requests in the unincorporated area per year, and we're like, no dude, you go back. That is not accurate at all. And so we made him go redo some of the numbers, and then he came back with some, we resent, he had the aggregate, we resent that and said, you're off, and made him recalculate that plan because it would have only been like 38 houses in a 10-year period. And I'm like, that's a year, move on, you got to get some more numbers, so.
I didn't see anything about a casino or a horse track or anything.
Not that I'm aware of. We have a feeding lot that had been, they were asking, so we're trying to get more information on like number of head.
Maybe really fast cows, then.
It would. That'd actually be kind of fun, though.
You ostriches and...
Yeah, no kidding. That was very humorous, so. All right. Any other questions in regard to survey?
Thank you, Tam. Appreciate it a lot.
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
Yep.
Items four, five, excuse me, five, six, and seven are identified for the Peterson subdivision rezoning preliminary and final plat. The applicants have requested that these items be postponed to the next meeting. I think we need a motion in order to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we postpone items five, six, and seven Peterson subdivision until the May meeting.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dakin.
Aye.
Fuesner.
Aye.
Rickard.
Aye.
Yaw.
Aye.
McGinnis.
Aye.
Dart.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
That motion passes. The next items, items eight and nine refer to the same parcels of property. The first part, first one is a rezoning, 2022-07, for to rezone from District C2 PD, Community Commercial Plan Development Overlay District to District C3 PD, General Commercial Plan Overlay District for the property located at 6020 Second Avenue. The first is the rezoning of that parcel, and then the second part is a hearing on the planned development plan, 2022-07. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Craig Bennett, 1111 Central Avenue, from Miller Associates, and I'm here to represent Weaver Properties or the businesses there is Kearney Equipment. The contractor running this through for them is Mark Willis of Morton Buildings. And so the property that we have is currently a developed parcel west of Second Avenue. It has a Second Avenue northwest, Frontage Road that also bisects the property, and then on the west side is Fourth Avenue. So you can see that the existing property has an existing building, paved Frontage Road, and then some outdoor storage area that they've had. The reason that we're here is originally it was C3 many years ago, and then it's went through the UDL process, it went back to C2, had a PD put on it, and so to add a building, which is the reason that we're here today, is they would like to add another building to this site, and so to make some of their existing uses conforming, we need to upgrade some of their requirements to make it conforming so they can add this building. So I'll kind of walk through those steps of deviations and increases that we have here. So the property that you can see, if I zoom in, this is that concrete frontage road. They have a concrete drive and circulation around three sides of the existing building. I'll show you, but the proposed building that they're proposing is in this location westerly of the existing building. Historically, they've had outdoor storage along here for display areas, and then outdoor storage for equipment in gravel areas that they've had along here. Along the west side there, as this has developed and Fourth Avenue then came through and got improved, there is sidewalk that you can see along the southern part lot, and we're, we'll show you on the development plan that we're extending that. There's no landscape or screening on this side to protect the outdoor stories that they would like to remain in this gravel area, which would be nonconforming by current standards, although it's been that way for many years. And then the same thing along the north side, so we'll kind of show you what we're proposing there. So the, from a rezoning standpoint, we're asking to rezone from a C2 PD to a C3 PD. It does not require the FLU or Future Land Use Map to be amended for the MU2 because of the fact that it's already compatible with C2 and C3. So this was the existing Northacre Fifth plat that we had at that time, and so just a little over five acres. This is the easement that we have here. Of course, the building sits here well within side of the setback, and then our other building would be here. There's a 10-foot utility easement existing and does have utilities along the north side, so we're staying off of that as well. It may not be visible to most people, but the area east of the frontage road is also part of this lot, which does not include the ditch, which if you were looking at terrain out there, that's the highway ditch that conveys the stormwater, but there is a flatter area that's east of the frontage road, which is still a part of this particular lot. So the rezoning exhibit that we have before you today is rezoning it from C23, or C2PD to C3PD for the 5.36 acres. As a requirement, this is a 200-foot radius map, what properties are located within the 200-foot boundary of that, and so you can see there's buildings on the north and buildings on the south, primarily residential kind of on the northwest there. So I'll kind of walk through this development plan here, and then just from a high level, and then I'll just kind of zoom in. So here's the existing building. This is the proposed building, and I'll zoom in, I'll kind of show you what we're doing here. So the proposed building is 60 by 90, and it's basically offset from this existing building, 60 feet, and then we're adding pavement in between on the east side and south side. So you can see even the dashed area, this is where some of the gravel surfacing and outdoor storage area exists today, and they would like that to remain. So to be able to do that, we have some landscape screening and buffer yard requirements, and so those are what we're showing as the trees along the north side of the property, south of the existing 10-foot utility easement, which would provide the required buffer yard and screening to allow this to remain. This could, this property could remain as it is if they didn't do any improvements, but because they're coming forward, that's where they're forced to go to make it conforming to the C3 PD. Additionally, they will have to provide the screening of the coniferous trees that you see here along the west side, and then the sidewalk that we see also along there will connect the sidewalk to at least their north property line, which will then have both properties connected with pedestrian access or walkways. So that'll be nice for that. Some additional increases that they have, they decided to show some increases here, which would be the deciduous trees that they would also, or street trees, that they would also have along that west property line as well. So you'll have a buffer yard and screening to give the blocking of the outdoor storage, but then the shade and landscape buffer trees that you have are your required 10-foot landscape buffer as well, so, as well as the sidewalk. So there's quite a few improvements that they're having to make, you know, just to kind of, and then choosing to make too as an increase in standards as well. These are the building elevations, a pretty simplified building. The east elevation, what would face their existing building so they can have access for pedestrian and vehicular on the east side in that corridor between the two buildings. This would be the west end, which would face Fourth Avenue. The north has no openings or ingress egress, and then the south-facing facade has two pedestrian doors, a little area here, they'll probably have some restroom and a little bit of office area of sorts in there, and then another door for circulation on the south. And so that primarily is what we have here for this particular project with the deviations, I guess, would be the outdoor storage gravel area, but trying to show that we are going to screen that, and then providing some increase of landscape on the west as well.
Thank you. Do you have anything that shows the, any change to the drainage of the property by adding that?
Yeah, so right now, this is their, this is their current drainage detention cell right now. So currently, this particular runoff, both for the building and the pavement parking area, comes like this. It's going to be, yeah, it's probably hard to see on that, the flow arrows, but these little dark things are the flow arrows which show drainage. They convey stormwater to this detention cell, which is then released here, and then underneath the existing frontage road, and then goes ultimately into, you can see by these contours here, this is the highway ditch. So as we increase this here, the drainage pattern that we're doing here is, we've also ran a model of what we have for size, and we have a size increase that we'll be doing just a little bit more of detention along this north side here. The cell is actually larger than what's needed for their current condition, and so we're able to capitalize on that just with the small increase. But if you were to go out there, you probably, by the time we're done, you won't notice that we have increased it noticeably, at least from the frontage standpoint, mostly on this northern side here as well.
The new paved area is going to be surface that is going to produce more runoff. Are they going to slant that back up to the north a bit, or?
Yeah, so.
Run off into the yard?
Nope. So like this paved area here, so our drainage pattern is to run it here and to here and to create a valley gutter in between here.
Okay.
And so then we'll be taking it northerly. We did look at an option, which they could choose to do, which requires some drainage basins that we would have here, and then we would have to pipe it and get it over to here. This seems to be an area where they have quite a bit of traffic through here, so we're trying to just do it with surface area and bring it around the building.
Yeah.
But this will be concrete on this area here. So the delta between the pre and post, Mr. Dart, is that if you see this circle here, this is more of a grass area in the existing condition, and the paving area between this concrete and this dashed is gravel, so the coefficient for the runoff there is very similar to an impervious. So the delta of what we're increasing is this grass area here, converting that to impervious, and then the area in here, converting that to impervious, so that's what's caused a minor increase as opposed to a major increase in stormwater detention.
Thank you. Now, what are the deviations you're requesting? This is a PD.
So the deviation that we're requesting is that the outdoor storage in the gravel surfacing area can remain as it is, and so in doing that, we're providing the screening buffer yard along the east, or the west and the north, and then as a form of increase in standards, we're adding some additional trees along the west as well. I can't say that we're, you know, it's an increase in standards by adding the sidewalk because we would need to do that as it's improved anyway, and so.
Okay.
But, I mean, realistically, there are some increases in standards from adding a building out there from what the current conditions are, but that's really the only increase, but the deviation is the outdoor storage.
Any additional questions for Mr. Bennett? Melissa?
Thank you. The reasonable request is compatible with the flu designation and purpose. The reasonable request brings the use type into conformance with the current Unified Land Development Ordinance. The property owner is making significant improvements resulting in bringing a legally nonconforming site into compliance with the minimum requirements of the ULDO. The PD plan meets the intention and purpose statement of the planned development district, and the proposed development is consistent with the 2016 Comprehensive Plan as referenced. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning as presented, and the planned development plan that the following request to deviation on paved service to remain within the outdoor storage area, and an increase in standard of inclusion of five street trees along Fourth Avenue to be added with new landscape screening. And I can answer any questions.
If we were not, this is just for my information, if we were not to approve the deviation of outdoor storage, what would be a standard? None, or is what?
They would have to meet the code requirement where they would have to pave additional surfaces, and that would, we'd then work with them about where they were going to have the outdoor storage, and they may have to reduce that footprint or move that outdoor storage completely.
I see.
They don't want to come into compliance.
Anything else from Melissa? It says a hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on either the rezoning or the planned development plan? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing in regards to the rezoning. This is the request to rezone from District C2 PD, Community Commercial Plan Development Overlay District to District C3 PD, General Commercial Plan Overlay, Development Overlay District. Is there a motion in regards to that?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve Agenda Item Number Eight, rezoning Number 2022-07, based upon staff's finding of fact.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Melissa?
Fuesner?
Aye.
Rickard?
Aye.
Yaw?
Aye.
McGinnis?
Aye.
Dart?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Dakin?
Aye.
The motion passes. We also have discussion about the planned development plan, Number 2022-07. This approved for construction of an additional building and pavement, and the request for deviations on paved service to remain within the outdoor storage area, and increase in standards to include the street trees and the additional landscaping. Anyone who wishes to be heard on that? Close the hearing and ask for a motion in regards to that.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve Agenda Item Number Nine, Planned Development Plan Number 2022-07, based upon staff's finding of fact.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any additional discussion?
Do we need to specify the deviation increase in standard in the motion?
No, Mr. Chairman. He presented it as such. It's also reflected in the memo, and so I'm fine with that.
Anything else? Melissa?
Rickard?
Aye.
Yaw?
Aye.
McGinnis?
Aye.
Dart?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Dakin?
Aye.
Fuesner?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. I see you sitting there. You're going to be back?
I just shortened my law.
The next items, 10, 11, 12, and 13, all deal with the same parcel of property that is located at 1730th Avenue. The first item is a hearing on the annexation of this parcel of property, 1990-03, to annex Lot 1 NAPS addition. The second, third, and fourth are associated with other elements of that, the building setback vacation for the property we're discussing at 1730th Avenue, and then additionally rezoning for that parcel to rezone from RR1 to C3 PD, and then finally a planned development plan for the proposed construction of storage units on the property that we're working with. Good morning, again.
Good morning. My name is Craig Bennett, 1111 Central Avenue, from Miller Associates, and I'm here representing the current owner of the property, which is Gracheck Properties. The proposed development plan being presented today as a part of this project is by MP Self Storage. And so I'll kind of walk through the property here. The plat, it's already platted, and it's known as NAPS addition, and so I'll be speaking to Lot 1, the only lot of that particular addition. The property is located west of 30th Avenue, and the bypass that goes over the railroad tracks, it's north of the current plat, and then south of the railroad tracks, and then to the west is undeveloped or unplatted. The existing zoning is one of the reasons that we're here today, is currently RR1 because of the existing residential house, single-family house that's out there, and outdoor accessory buildings. And so what the plan would be for this particular development is to remove the residential building, house, and buildings out there. And so abutting on the north is property Zoned Ag, including the railroad right-of-way. On the south is BP. The east is M1, and northeast would be M2, and the west would be Ag as well. The Future Land Use or FLU map shows MU2, and so it would be compatible with the proposed zonings. We're not asking for an amendment to the FLU for this particular project. The site location, as you can see here, this is a current single-family home with the outdoor storage. It's pretty much grass and then gravel driveways around the residential farmstead, homestead kind of building there with trees abutting the north. The railroad right-of-way is 200 feet each side of the north rail of the track, so a total of 400 feet of right-of-way on this particular side of the section line, on this particular side of the section line, it is slightly different. So anyway, it's 200 feet, so from this track here, that's where the railroad right-of-way exists, so, you know, a lot of people use and farm and use that area, but, which, good or bad or indifferent, that's why the trees are where they're at, and they're so far off of this. From an infrastructure standpoint, with the proposed use for storage units, we would not need sanitary sewer, but sanitary sewer does currently exist and was extended northerly through the infrastructure project that we had along 30th Avenue and brought up to this location where there's a manhole. So it does have the ability to be served, although we won't be asking or needing to tie on to that sanitary.
And city water?
What's that?
And city water?
And city water, yep. So the next, I guess I got that in the next one after this one. So I apologize. Stormwater, I didn't have it in the right order for you there.
All right.
Stormwater, when the bypass was, the overpass was put in over here, stormwater comes off of the overpass, is collected in inlets here. There's also area inlets out here which account for the runoff of the frontage road, which is adjacent to the west side of the 30th Avenue. Overpass is collected in here, and then taking, taken southerly along 30th Avenue and continued south to the Platte River. This is the overall drainage pattern that we see regionally. It's kind of important to kind of look at what do we have for the potential of It's kind of important to kind of look at what do we have for the potential of either run-on from our adjacent properties or things that we have to pass through. And so these, from a high-level contour standpoint, if I, if my raindrop and I go perpendicular all of the property to the west, flows almost directly south. This parcel here has, as we look at the detailed survey, it's more of a northwest-to-southeastally flow, but, which makes sense why it goes to the frontage road in the ditch and the culverts that are through the drives, and it's collected in the inlet here. This is an increase of that same drainage pattern. There is also a drainage ditch along the southern third rail of the MPBD, or the Union Pacific Railroad, and it has a ditch here which then goes underneath what used to be 30th Avenue, which would be the alignment of this frontage road here. When 30th Avenue was built, it was shifted to the east to allow some of that access to remain and then converted. But it has a deeper pipe that then outlets into this ditch here. So it's a lot shallower than it is here, almost 10 feet shallower than it is here. But this drainage here goes south, and it doesn't, doesn't really go to the railroad channel that we have there. And so we're planning on just utilizing that same drainage pattern there. From a water standpoint, we have water that also extends all the way through here, and so we will be utilizing that 16-inch water main for our fire hydrants, which I'll show you on our blow-up that we have. This is the plat that we had from 1990, so one of the other items that we have before you is a vacation, a vacation of a setback or a building setback. And so this is the Lot 1, and there was a 100-foot building setback that was done when this plat was created. Thought process probably would have been because of not knowing exactly how that overpass was going to exist and where that would be. And so when we look at that, we're asking today that this be reduced to the current standards, which would be 25 feet. And so allowing that to happen would allow us, this is a 40, 33 feet, and when it was platted, the additional seven feet was granted. So there was a 33 feet each side of section line when 30th Avenue used to be there for '66, and when it was platted, an additional seven feet was granted to give it 40 feet for half to, for that frontage road right-of-way, which exists today. And so the 100 feet then starts from there and goes back. So we're asking for that to be, to be vacated, which is this figure here that's in your packet, to request that to be reduced to 25 feet to match code. As a component of this, one of the other things in the public hearing is the rezoning of the Art 1 to C3 PD. That figure is there. And then I'll kind of walk through the development plan that we have here. What is within the 200-foot radius? Agricultural railroad right-of-way, the overpass, and part of this building here. From a proposed development plan standpoint, this is where that water line exists, the 16-inch water line, and we are showing two fire hydrants that we will be installing to provide what would be, if I show a blue line here, which overlaps itself to provide fire protection to meet the 400-foot radius, or 400-foot as you drag your hose alignment to get to all sides of all buildings. And so this would be the worst-case scenario. So by placing two fire hydrants here, we're able to provide fire coverage as well all the way around there. And we, I did, I'll show you here, we did do fire truck access route and turning movements that we were required to do to get around the site as well. So just to kind of walk through the site here, the orange-colored areas are four buildings that have a total of 158 units on them, and we have worked pretty diligently to try and make sure that all of the doors are kept interior. So this building here, the door access to these units would face south. This particular building here would have a, have split units, but the doors would face north and south, and the same would be true for this particular building that face north and south. There would be no indoor units on all four of these, so no doors would be visible from the road. So originally, our plan was to have that, and as part of code, it required some additional screening and things like that, so we've removed those so that we would just have end walls there. Some other, some other components that we have is, along the north side here, we have a proposed detention cell by which we would provide drainage for east and west through these alleyways that would go to this detention cell. The bold black line that you see here would be our outlet structure and pipe, which would then allow that stormwater to be conveyed into the ditch to follow the existing and current drainage pattern. We have a stormwater pipe that we put underneath the driveway here to allow that stormwater to convey. On the southern portion as well, some of this drainage would coexist in this open out drainage way along the west and south. We have a similar drainage pattern here that would be outletted as well. In the southeast corner, we have a proposed sign there. We have two parking stalls here, which will be, meet the requirement to have parking stalls should somebody need to go to their unit and park and not be in the road while they're visiting out there. We have a total of eight, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, yep, eight off-street parking stalls available on this particular plan here. And this will also be a conveyance structure, driveway path too, which will help for snow removal that we'd be able to push and push snow right into the detention cells. Not that we really ever get snow anymore here, but if we did, that's where it would go. Some additional things that we have here is the street tree requirement here. Some of, some of what we've chose to do as, as an increase here would be to add some additional trees here that we have to the east frontage right-of-way. Along the south side, the building face itself would meet the code requirement for the screening, just because there's no doors and just the facade, but we've added trees along the south side too to kind of soften that building facade up as well, and we're utilizing that as an increase. The same thing would be true for the ends of these buildings as well, trying to put trees along there too as well to show an increase there. So as I kind of walk through the plan here, I kind of walk through the deviations and the increases that we're, that we're asking for on this site. It's kind of a challenging site in terms of it's, it's not visible really too much from the overpass, and it's kind of tucked away, and I know there's been different people that have came to us over time and said, you know, what can I put there? What do I, I don't want to put a house there. I don't know if I really want to live there, you know, and so, and it doesn't have wonderful access if you're going to have a retail business there. And so, so in doing that, we've tried to, tried to maximize the property here, and the frontage road probably is, you know, it's a dead-in frontage road, and so this really has made a lot of good sense. So I'll just kind of list the deviations that we have here. We're asking for a 20-foot landscape buffer yard on the east side of the property, which would be this side, meaning that the overpass, you know, really provides natural screening, I guess, of sorts. You know, you can't really, I mean, if you drive down the frontage road, that would be the only time you really get to see much of, much of the site here. And so we're asking that, that deviation to be reduced to 20 feet. A 15-foot landscape buffer yard on the, on the south side here instead of 20, so that would be the five foot there. Again, we're trying to put some trees there too to help soften that up, but there's not a lot of, a lot of really needed space there, so we're trying to just at least soften it up by asking for that five foot. On the west side, it does abut agricultural ground there, but we are providing a buffer yard, but instead of the 20, we're asking for 10-foot in terms of the horizontal space, still providing the trees that are required there for the buffer yard. And then the last one would be the masonry frontage on the four ends of these buildings here that would abut that frontage road below the overpass there. The increase in standards that we're, that we're asking for would be along 30th Avenue, providing a total of seven trees there, planting eight additional trees along the south side of the property, the additional landscape and screening along the west-side, west-adjacent end buildings there, and trying to preserve as much as we can of the existing trees that are in railroad right-of-way property that are also on our property as well. And then the driveways that we have to the facility, what MP Storage likes to do, we're required to have 25 feet, but in their storage units, they have an increase in width, which is kind of nice for turning movements and things like that, and so they're increasing those to 30 feet, which they wouldn't have to do, but then they are paved concrete as well. And so it's something that's kind of nice. As I was talking about the fire sprinkler, fire serviceability, and the two fire hydrants that we're having, this is the turning movements that we have to provide for fire trucks. This is not the tall ladder truck that we have. We were given the reduced wheelbase movements by the Carney Farady Department, so this is showing that we can come in, make circulations around, and come back out with the spacing that we have, and we still have quite a bit of area here, so I get a little conservative, or try to show how close I can get and show how much offset we have when I drive the trucks through there. These are the building elevations that we have here. It's more of a structural view here, so I did include a picture here in the presentation that we kind of give you the look and facade, a little more dimensional information than probably what you want to see here. This is from some storage units that they have here in town here that I had a quick picture of, just to kind of show you the look and feel of what they currently have. So lastly, in addition to this, we're asking to be annexed into the city. Currently, this lot, one-lot subdivision is not a part of the city limits, so we're asking to be annexed in as well. I think that's an overview of all those different items.
That's a bunch.
It has been, it's been a difficult site.
For as small a property as that is.
I know it is, and it's just, I, I'm kind of excited, honestly, as a citizen, to see somebody want to do something with a challenging piece of property.
There's not much else you could do with that.
Yeah.
These storage units, they're unmanned, so, I mean, it's, there's, there's no office or...
That is correct.
And it is not gated? Or does that matter?
It, it currently is not gated. That is currently the, the plan.
Any more questions for Mr. Bennett?
Did Browns have any issues with the offset changing to have, you know, the property line or the buffer zone changed to their property line on the...
I am not aware of that.
I haven't seen any notes in it, but I don't know if they knew what was going on yet or not.
Yeah, I, I'm honestly not aware, so.
Have you had any conversations with Brown or...
I have not, no.
Anything else? Thank you. Melissa, do you have some comments for us?
I do. We've received no calls regarding any concerns or in support of the PD or the rezoning. The annexation is consistent with the city's annexation policy. The vacation request for the platted building setback is compatible with the intended development of the area. The rezone request is compatible with the flu designation and purpose, and the proposed development, even with the requested deviations, meets the purpose and intent of the C3 zoning district. The developer has proposed an increase in minimum standards with additional landscaping, preserving the existing landscaping along the north side, and increasing the paving standard within the development that meets the intention of the planned development overlay district. The proposed development is consistent with the 2016 comprehensive plan as referenced. The staff recommends approval of the annexation request to vacate the platted building setback, rezoning, all as presented, and the planned development plan with the following requested deviations: 20-foot landscape buffer the east side of the property, the 15-foot landscape buffer yard on the south side of the property, the 10-foot landscape buffer on the west side of the property, and the no masonry requirements for buildings. And the increase in standards that they've proposed as along 30th Avenue provide a total of seven street trees, plant eight additional trees along the south side of the property, placing additional landscape screening along the west side adjacent to the buildings that are already serving as the screening, preserving the existing tree line along the north side of the property, and all driveways within the facility will be paved at a minimum width of 30 feet.
Thank you. Any questions for Melissa? Okay, there are several items to have our action taken on. The first of these is a hearing on the annexation of the property as presented by Mr. Bennett. And that is a hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in regards to that? I'm going to close the hearing and ask for a motion in regards to the annexation, Number 1990-03.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve annexation 1990-03 for Lot 1 NAPS addition to the City of Kearney.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any additional discussion? Melissa?
Yaw?
Aye.
McGinnis?
Aye.
Dart?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Dakin?
Aye.
Fussner?
Aye.
Rickard?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is the building setback vacation for which there's no hearing necessary. This is the application to vacate the 100-foot building setback on the east side of Lot 1 NAPS addition. Is there a motion in regards to that?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve building setback vacation 2022-02 for NAPS, first Lot 1 NAPS addition.
Second.
It's moved, been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
McGinnis?
Aye.
Dart?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Dakin?
Aye.
Fussner?
Aye.
Rickard?
Aye.
Yaw?
Aye.
That motion carries. The next item is a hearing on the rezoning of this par, parcel property from RR1 to C3 PD, General Plan, a General Commercial Plan Development Overlay District for the property at 1730th Avenue. Is there a motion in regards to that?
Mr. Chairman, based on the staff's finding of fact, I move we approve rezoning Number 2022-08 for Gracheck Properties and MP Self Storage of Lot 1 NAPS addition.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Melissa?
Dart?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Dakin?
Aye.
Fussner?
Aye.
Rickard?
Aye.
Yaw?
Aye.
McGinnis?
Aye.
The motion carries. And the final is a hearing on the planned development plan, Number 2022-08. This is a planned district development plan approval for the proposed construction of storage units on the property to be rezoned to District C3 PD. I'm going to close that hearing and ask for a motion in regards to that.
Mr. Chairman, again, based on the staff's finding of fact, I move we approve planned development Number 2022-08 for Lot 1 NAPS addition.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. This does then include those deviations that have been suggested and presented by the applicant as well as the city, just to make sure that that's in the minutes.
Yeah, yeah, the motion clar, as a point of clarification for the motion to include the requested deviations and increase in standards.
Any discussion on that? I'll close the hearing and ask for a motion.
Malone?
Aye.
Dakin?
Aye.
Fussner?
Aye.
Rickard?
Aye.
Yaw?
Aye.
McGinnis?
Aye.
Dart?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. It looks like kind of a fun project to develop. Was it any fun? Fair enough, well, that works. The next item on our agenda is a hearing on the Code Amendments, Number 2022-01. Conduct a public hearing on proposed amendments to a variety of portions of Chapter 49 dealing with off-street parking. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
We have your name and address.
Name's Melissa Dordy O'Hara, City Planner, City of Kearney, 18 East 22nd Street, Kearney, Nebraska. All righty. Well, thank you for your time and efforts in reviewing this code. I first want to point out that I really appreciated working with our subcommittee that we had formed, which included, if you remember, members Brent Yaw, Richard McGinnis, and Mr. Dave Malone. We collaborated with the Director and Assistant Director of Public Works, along with our Chief Building Inspector and Code Enforcement Officer. We had a series of three meetings and kind of tackled various topics at those meetings... We had a series of three meetings and kind of tackled various topics at those meetings, which included having the relevance city staff members come in, provide some further information, gave a chance for those subcommittee members to meet some staff that they may not typically get to meet, like our code enforcement officer, who you don't want to meet necessarily in his official capacity, but great guy, love working with Jason. And then the chief building inspector, Andy, stepped in, and then we had Luke Dutcher, our assistant public works director, come in and talk with us and review some code. So I really enjoyed that time and the input that the committee provided and the collaboration that we had through that process. So what we really started looking at was to resolve some issues that we had regarding additional parking areas and residential property. We looked at circle drives. We also went in and did a review of our off-street parking minimum requirements. I wasn't necessarily looking forward to having to go in and amend a chapter of code, but once we started researching, looking what other communities are doing, national trends, how we are applying the code, I was pleasantly surprised that we aren't coming to you with a lot of major changes. We just have some things that we need to clean up in code to help us better apply the code and make it easier to use for our citizens and enforce as well. So I was glad that I didn't have to do a major rewrite, for sure. Though, sometimes those are fun, but with parking code, I don't really consider that fun. From time to time, we always come in and look at code, like I said. In two thousand eight, there were some major revisions added to the code regarding RV parking and trailers and where people could place those on the property. And then throughout the years, we've done some minor updates to the off-street parking table or added some things through drive-through requirements. So there's just been some minor changes, and again, today, what we're proposing are just some minor changes. We have really six key areas that we are focusing on for proposed changes today. And that first area is the driveway extension or parking pad. So currently in code, if you wanted to add a driveway extension or parking pad, it has to be behind the building setback line and have a driveway that leads back to it. In applicability of that code and how we have our side yard setbacks as only a minimum of seven feet, it makes it difficult for a lot of property owners to add that. So what we've concluded is that we propose to allow for driveway extension or parking pad to be a total twenty feet in width that can be added to the street front yard, or sorry, front yard or street yard side setback. The second thing that we looked at was the circle drives. There was not any really clear code as to whether or not you could or could not have a circle drive. And so we are having to have those requests come to us and hold up building permits, because then we'd have to have Public Works review those. And so we thought this was a great time to get better clarification, so we added language which included the requirements for circle drives to allow them on lot sizes that can have the street frontage for two curb cuts. You could have, if you've got a corner lot, you could have a total of three curb cuts. So there's now requirements in there that make it clear that our building inspectors can follow, that can just issue permits a little quicker. Parking count totals, one thing that we were internally doing is when you had a project come through and we said that you are required to have twenty spaces, there is a minimum requirement of ADA parking that you had to include. Some jurisdictions would say twenty plus ADA here. We just say it's a total, so you provide your twenty that would include ADA parking. And we're using that same policy towards electrical vehicle charging. So if you notice Hy-Vee, if they are required to have two hundred spaces, if they wanted to dedicate twenty of those to electronic vehicle charging, we'd allow that. We don't regulate that, so if you wanted to park your diesel Hummer in that spot, you'd have a right to do that. If somebody wanted to complain to Hy-Vee, they could then rectify that situation. But we clarified that in code as well. It's a question that comes up when people are coming through to get building plans approved. Parking count reduction options, from time to time, we'll have a project that'll come through. Due to the lot size, they just need a reduction of one or two spaces. Currently in code, they would have had to go through to the city council to get that approved. And so we've proposed a two-option approach so that anything that's less than ten percent of their total parking, that we can just go in as city staff and, through city administration, just internally approve that with the building permit process. So then again, we aren't holding up projects over one or two parking spaces when it's, that's not. Now, if it's over ten percent, if they're requesting a lot of reductions in parking, that still will then go through city council approval. And we kind of clarified what we need to provide as city staff, what they need to do on their end. So that makes that part of code. Parking lot landscaping, there was just some redundant language, so we corrected the section number that it referenced to, because that's been wrong in code. And then we just took out the redundant language and referenced people to the section of code within the landscaping section to meet those parking lot requirements. And then we just went through, as you need to do from time to time, check that everything's spelled correctly, check that tables are matching, updated some terminology, formatting of some of the chapters. Some of them had chapter titles, some of them didn't. Some sections didn't have a clarification of what they were doing. And then just minor edits throughout Chapter forty-nine. Then the other thing that we did, when they went and added Section one-ten of the code back in two thousand eight, they put some definitions in there that really applied to all of the code. So we took those definitions out and moved them to Chapter twelve. So that's why you're asking to propose amendments to Chapter twelve, because we want to take them out of Chapter forty-nine and put them in the correct location within the code. So that is all I have in my presentation regarding the code. I can answer any questions now and read my staff recommendations or staff's finding of fact.
If you wish to do that.
Okay. Staff's finding of fact are that from time to time, city staff should review and provide recommended updates to the UDL to align with current development needs within our community. The proposed amendments to Chapter nine forty-nine provide better direction for placement of parking pads, design of driveway expansions, and clarify the number of drives for residential property owners. The proposed revisions to the process for reduction in off-street parking provide an option for the city staff to assist developers within reason to reduce permit approval times. The proposed code amendments provide additional clarity for developments to be consistent with the surrounding and new and existing development. The proposed code amendments are consistent with the 2016 comprehensive plans policies as referenced. When we went to publish, there was a piece of code that we did not include in that publish. So whomever gets to make this recommendation for a motion, we request that the recommend approval of Chapter nine, Sections one oh two, one oh three, one oh four, one oh five, one oh six, one oh nine, one-ten, and then your proposed motion for Chapter twelve, you can just say as presented.
And those are the things that you just moved around to get them in the right spot.
Yes.
Do we have to specifically note that item forty-nine one oh four was not advertised, but it is part of this, so it would be to say that, including item number forty-nine dash oh four.
That could be the motion. So the motion could say, I move to approve Chapter forty-nine as presented, including changes to Section forty-nine dash one oh four.
Thank you.
As I reviewed, thought about our meetings and reviewed this, then maybe the most substantive part of this is the giving staff the permission to make some decisions that prior had come through Planning Commission. I don't see really anything that is more onerous for developers than what's already there. We're not increasing anything to make it more difficult. The changes, allowing staff and some of these other things, really make it easier for developers and hopefully more clerk, right?
I concur with that statement.
I mean, the driveway thing was, people were doing it anyway and calling it a basketball court, and it was... We don't keep notes, historical notes of why it actually ever ended up in there?
Yeah.
Which was...
Yeah, that was a...
Yeah, that was a wow.
I think the philosophy of trying to give these repetitive, smaller items to staff to do just makes a lot of sense. So as we go forward, you go forward in looking at all the code, if you keep that philosophy in mind, at least I think you'll have at least general support with the commission.
Thank you.
I will introduce something that probably has nothing to do with this, but may also, and it's an item for future consideration, in regards to the location of the driveways when you have more than two garage bays. For instance, if you're building a structure that has a three-car garage bay or four or whatever the number is, that I feel strongly that those bays need to be recessed a minimum of fifteen feet back away from the closest front port, front part of the main house. That they go back there instead of intruding into the front yard, as they are in so many different places. And there are a variety of reasons for those, but some of that is that aesthetically, it's a violation of aesthetic rules for all practical purposes. You build a house that has some kind of a theme to it. It's a craftsman house. It's Italianate. It's a four-square, whatever it is. You're concerned with the architecture and what the house looks like. And then you put up a bay of flat, white architecture in front of it, saying, "Welcome." You could land airplanes on the driveways. The porches are hidden ten feet back away from, you've got to go look for them. And aesthetically, it's very unpleasing. So, you know, we have in many parts of our town, places where you can build very large houses on very large lots. And the primary feature of the front of the house is, "These are my four-car garages. I've got a lot of vehicles." So I'm just suggesting for future reference that at least in the building code, the front of the house setback set forward and allow the garages to be back or some way produce something so that the main feature of the front of the house is not the damn garages. I said my piece. She has no comment in my... I know. I got to do that, or I wouldn't sleep tonight. Any other comments or questions? It's now in the minutes. Any else regarding all of this? This is kind of a good thing to do. Okay. Well, I'm going to close the hearing in regards to the code amendment twenty twenty-two oh one, dealing with parking, and ask for a motion on it.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve items fourteen and fifteen, let's see.
Just fourteen.
Just for, I move we approve item fourteen, code amendment twenty twenty-two dash zero one, based on city's finding of fact with, let's see, do we need, what'd you say, item forty-nine one oh four?
With...
Including item forty-nine one...
Forty-nine one oh four.
Section forty-nine dash one.
Can you respect that?
No, I don't think so.
You moved approval for the...
Twenty twenty-two dash zero one, including item forty-nine one oh, section forty-nine one oh four.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any additional discussion? Olivia?
Dakin.
Aye.
Fuesner.
Aye.
Rickard.
Aye.
Yah.
Aye.
McGinnis.
Aye.
Dart.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is code amendment number twenty-two dash oh three, and this is in reference to proposed amendments to Section, Chapter fifty, signed regulations for the City of Kearney code.
Do we need a...
Yes, we still need to issue two, sorry. Twenty twenty-two dash oh two, Chapter twelve.
Chapter twelve.
In the fifteen.
Which is definitions.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's right at the top. Yeah, okay, I'm looking at the bottom. Code amendment twenty-two dash oh two, which is the proposed amendments to Chapter twelve definitions.
And we'll close the hearing?
Close the hearing?
Sure.
And Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve code amendment twenty twenty-two dash zero two, changes to Chapter twelve definitions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any additional discussion?
Fuesner.
Aye.
Rickard.
Aye.
Yah.
Aye.
McGinnis.
Aye.
Dart.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Dakin.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we can conduct a hearing on the sign regulations following Sections of Chapter fifty and open, well, let you go ahead and tell us what you're going to do.
Okay. So what we're really doing today for Chapter fifty, we're not doing an overhaul or anything. We're just proposing some minor changes to the code, which improves clarification and then adding pole signs into the BP zoning district. Many of you that served on the board before probably remember two thousand nineteen, we had to go in and make some major revisions to the sign code. Those were in compliance to Supreme Court ruling and just to overall make the code a little more user-friendly. So we aren't going to be doing anything major, except from time to time, like we've done with the parking code, we just need to go back in and check to make sure that the code is meeting what we need towards development and the standards of how we're applying it. So we're just proposing some minor revisions. One of the things we noticed is that we are missing the zoning district mixed use in a lot of our tables. So we're going to go in and add that to basically all the tables within the chapter. Then we're adding some clarifying language regarding who submits what, who's responsible for what, and things like that throughout the entire chapter. And then we will add the ability to permit pole signage within the BP zoning district. When we did the last major revision, the BP zoning district really wasn't used in its entirety throughout the city. We have a lot more properties that have that zoning district, and we have a lot of requests come through for pole signage in BP districts. Currently, pole signage is permitted in the C one, two, and three districts, CBD, and then our M one and M two zoning districts, if that should read. We would allow, we would, we propose to allow pole signage in the BP zoning district, but it'll only be along arterial streets, have a height limitation of thirty-five feet. And then we've reduced the maximum sign area to a hundred and fifty feet from two hundred feet. BP signs that's currently allowed, you're supposed to have a maximum of two per premises, and they must be separated by three hundred feet. None of that will change. So if you want to have a monument sign and a pole sign as long as you're on an arterial, that's a feasibility, or you could still have the two pole signs, which are along street frontages. So you can't have two along the same frontage. Just to demonstrate how this would be applied, for example, this is a map that shows the current zoning districts for, that I listed, including the BP Business Park. And then these are our arterials that we have throughout the city. So along Highway ten here, Kearney East Expressway, with these BP zoning districts, only the properties along the blue arterials will be allowed to have a pole sign. The BP is down here along Eleventh Street potentially. And then I will note that in our other commercial zoning districts, we have no restrictions on where the pole signage has to be. So if you're on a collector and you're C three, you could have a pole sign. So city staff finding of facts are, from time to time, we should review and provide recommendations to the ULD to align with our development needs within the community. The proposed code amendments for signage within the BP district are consistent with other zoning districts throughout the city. The proposed code amendments provide clarity for developments to be consistent with surrounding new and existing development. And the proposed code amendments are consistent with the 2016... new and existing development, and the proposed code amendments are consistent with the 2016 comprehensive plan as referenced, and staff recommends approval of the Chapter 15 code amendments as presented. And I can answer any questions.
I'm glad you guys approve of it.
Well, I will say that the, the pole signs in BP on arterials, when monument signs can serve the same purpose equally well, is just something that I feel strong, not, I'm not going to vote against it, but I feel it's unnecessary. If you're driving down a tree-lined street in a BP area and you've got a 30-foot sign standing up above you, I don't know, doesn't make much sense, but if you've got one right there at eye level where you should be looking, it's probably much more safe and appropriate. So I like monument signs more than I like tall signs.
Thank you, Chairman.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing and ask for a motion in regards to Code Amendment Number 2022-03 regarding Section 50 of the, Chapter 50 of sign regulations. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve Agenda Item Number 16, Code Amendment Number 2022-03, Sections of Chapter 50, based on staff's finding of fact.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any additional discussion? Malia?
Rickard.
Aye.
Yaw.
Aye.
McGinnis.
Aye.
Dart.
Nay.
Malone.
Aye.
Dakin.
Aye.
Fuesner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item Number, okay. Any additional reports or discussions, anything we're doing that you need to talk about?
I, I just wanted to say that if, if the commission and staff agrees that when the Buffalo County has updated their comprehensive plan, I think it'd be good to have somebody here so that not just we can hear, we can read the plan, but it gives us a chance to ask questions and interact with our counterparts from the county, and it's always good to have communication flowing back and forth. So I just wanted to go on the record for supporting that presentation if they're willing to do it.
I have been attending where they've had special notification that they will be talking about comprehensive plan business. I think that's a vital component that we provide input. We at the city provided data to the consultants to help with housing, so we have been in contact with them. And so I will definitely reach out to their zoning administrator and get further clarification on when that plan's going to be finalized, and then request that once that does get finalized, that they come present something to us. I think that's.
And if they agree to do that, when the time comes for us to update our plan, we'll have to reciprocate.
Yes.
If they, if they're interested, which they probably would be.
So I don't know if this is, can be in this, but when we met with Andy, he was talking about the Starb-, we spent time talking about the new Starbucks location.
Mm-hmm.
And the sign was going to disappear, but the sign has not disappeared.
I don't know when the deadline is for that project to be finalized and when in that part of that development of that site, when they are taking that down yet, but.
And, and that's just because it's too close to the corner, is that?
I believe so. I wasn't involved in that permitting, but I can have Andy reach out to you.
You're talking about Talmadge?
No, no.
The Starbucks down on 11th. Oh, 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 okay, yeah.
It's been a long time talking about it. The end of the Mexican restaurants. It's been, what, 30 women there in my 40 years, it seems like?
It's been a, yeah, a magic show.
Ever since Renzo left, that was the last good thing that was there, I think. Yeah. Food's been great, but nothing's ever right.
But there are, there are some areas, particularly along Talmadge, where the vision triangle at Corners is blocked substantially by monument signs that are ill-placed.
Maybe a pole sign would have been better.
Or you can just set them back a little bit.
I couldn't resist, sorry, Stan.
We were all thinking it.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. But just act, look at Talmadge on a Friday or Saturday night and look at the traffic flow to get through there. You've got parking on both sides of Talmadge, and you've got heavy traffic flow, and it's just barely passable. I don't know, I doubt that there's a way to widen that, but to get rid of the street parking on one side of that road or the other, I think would be certainly a safety thing.
Might get better as Talmadge gets paved onto Yanni Road and diesel traffic.
Maybe.
People be more willing to go west.
Well, once you get, once you get past the developed area and now you're on the huge site, it does open up again, but as much parking space as they've got there, there shouldn't be any on-street parking. You could park half a Kearney on their parking lots.
I think you'd have, like, any burger, or what is it, Angus Burger, you know, that's always, you're parking in the street because there's nowhere around there to park.
Yeah. Well, oddly enough, there's a parking lot behind that's rarely used, but people aren't going to take the time to go there. But I think that's something the city has to be aware of, particularly for emergency vehicles. Again, the extension of Talmadge to Yanni Road is to take advantage of accessibility for emergency vehicles. Otherwise, you've only got one way in, and that's Talmadge and Second. On a Saturday night, geez, that could be dangerous. Anything else?
Thanks to those who served on the subcommittee for the code amendments.
Yes.
Appreciate your, your time.
Thanks for leaving that.
Want you to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you next time.
Happy Easter, everyone.
Yes, thank you.